When the addition correction been to the agenda.
I have read that but there was no court, not fully stated.
Okay, go ahead.
You free boy eh?
I'm a ballon d'or, yes.
Republic of Liberia, your president. Number one for him for four. Senator Yomri Kaka Lawrence, President Pro Tempore of the Senate Insection. Capitol Building, Rovia, Liberia. Madam President Pro Tempore. I'm pleased to submit here with the below nomination. Any certain confirmation where applicable. The Liberian Drawn Enforcement Agency, LDEA. Mister Antolyn Soo, Director General. I would greatly appreciate if this be given extra confirmation by the Senate. So as to ensure smooth transition in government. Grand regards, Mr. Joseph Human Barkowski, President of the Republic of Liberia. Mister Presiding, congratulations from the President of Liberia.
As the way colleagues, you listen to the reading of the communicator from the President nominating. The Director General. On the last week of September 4th. For Senate Con- Commission on Conservation. What's your opinion, President? Senator Numen, what do you want to say? As the way colleagues, I believe this is a very. From the team of Senator, nominating. Professions of the. Liberian Court Department Agency. A move that will reach you in the city. And try forward to the American. Or defense. For this year, of that knowing. And we hope this valley after completion. This is our, we are saying. You listen to the motion? What's? Are you ready to vote? All those who say yes. Against, abstain. Motion carried, second. Please follow the communication of the President. To their Superior Committee for Comp- Commission. Conservation of President. Next, Antolyn.
This is our President's text. Congratulations from Senator Joe Immanuel Tyler of Grand Direct County. Regarding the withdrawal of motions for reconsideration. On vote for Labor Committee report on the RSG and the Brave Workers in Nima County. Yes, sir. Liberia Senate. October 49, 2024. The President Pro Tempore in this state with Senators. The Liberia Senate Insection. Capitol Building, Capitol Hill, Rovia, Liberia. Subject. Withdrawal of motion for reconsideration of votes. On Labor Committee reporting. Report to Grand CRAS. In the Brave Workers in Nima County. Dear Honorable President Pro Tempore. And extreme members of the Senate. I write your formally withdrawal of my earlier motion. For reconsideration concerning the vote taken in view of the Labor Committee's report. On the issues raised by Brave Workers of China Railway, seven groups, CRAS. Engaged in the Nima Road Consortium project. A motion for reconsideration. I acknowledge the efforts of the Senate and Labor Commission to address the concerns of the affected workers. And believe that I doubt that other committee recommendations. Serve the best interest of all parties involved. I'm confident that the Senate's decision reflects our collective commitment. To supporting fair labor policies in the welfare of Liberian workers. Especially those engaged in part of national infrastructure projects. Thank you for your understanding and consideration in this matter. And finally, Senator Joe Immanuel Tyler Senior. Grand Direct County. And Chairman, Senate Committee on Sexual Security, Protection and Justice. And Vice Chair, Senate Committee on Executory. Mister Presiding, my pleasure.
Open the area for discussion.
Yes, I know.
Open for discussion. One of the UPI tattoos. One of the UPI tattoos. One of the rescue tattoo is level.
As the way colleagues, listen to the reading of the communicator from Senator Joe Tyler. With joy, a motion for reconsideration on the Labor Committee. Regarding, let me see, our LG and Brave Workers in Nima. What's your opinion, President?
That withdrawal was expected.
It was.
And the people, you tell the people.
Okay, so we know. I like to see Nima Grand here together.
No. You just seen in the photos. You just seen in people too.
This is our President's text. The Bill of 4, I amend, Chapter 4, Section 4.2, 4.3 and 4.4. Of the Criminal Procedure Law. Chapter 12 of the Liberian Court of Law and Rights. The second reading. And I amend, Chapter 4, Section 4.2, 4.3 and 4.4. The Criminal Procedure Law. Chapter 2 of the Liberian Court of Law and Rights.
Yes, sir. New deficit. The reading, the second reading, and chapter. Of the Bill. And Act 4, Chapter 4, Section 4.2, 4.3. 4.4 of the Criminal Procedure Law. Chapter 2 of the Liberian Court of Law and Rights. That has to do with statute of limitation. What's your opinion, President? Senator, what's your opinion, Senator?
Mister Helen Lee. Congratulations to the reading of the. Bill, she gave to a man. The law of the Criminal Procedure Law. A move that the Senate received. And forward to the Committee on Judiciary. And the T-shirt. The Catholic G, the sacrament. All the Senate.
So, here I move. Here I move, and secondly. That the Bill be sent to. The Committee on Judiciary, Cabinet, or each office. And the Judiciary Committee beginning having contact.
Three weeks.
Two weeks.
To report.
To report. To refer to our action. What's your opinion, President? Are you ready to vote? All those who say yes. Against, abstain. Motion carried, second, the Senate. Please, Senator, go to the action. Have note that the Judiciary Committee will report to the General Bureau in two weeks. Regarding the Bill. Next, Antolyn.
Report from Senate Committee. Report from the, reports from the Joint Committee on Public Cooperation and Judiciary. Human Rights Friends and Petition on the Bill. For an act to create. Liberian, Singapore Regulatory. Authority and the Liberian Singapore Disequalization. For voting.
Lieutenant, there are been a lot, or no? The Chairman on, the Chairman on Judiciary has a submission to make regarding. Then we can proceed, or we can determine how to proceed. So, check.
Thank you, thank you, Lieutenant, for the recommendation. Uh, colleagues, maybe. Last time this, Bill, audit to Bill performed on the floor. We had a debate. For them. And we don't have a negative. Was the conclusion that, uh. Uh, we incorporate. The people expressed during the debate. Into the instrument. And so we saw the day was sent back to the Committee for that purpose. I would did that. But we can realize that some provisions, especially the penalties and some other matters were then out. So I want to take it back again, uh. To do a fine tuning and then represent it for, for, for passage. Next week. Thank you. Next week. Next, uh. Then, then, then the copy this time will be distributed to. Because we have a chance to distribute it.
Next day.
Thank you.
Okay, so the. The action to vote for their board. The Joint Committee on Public Cooperation and Judiciary. Uh, began at act of the La Perce for regulatory authority and that's the law, three point, Desequalization. Will be deferred to next Thursday. Is that, is that what it is? Next Thursday.
Provided.
Not necessarily for debate. But provided that they are plain narrative, I mean, data. That the concerns expressed as plain narrative. Will be incorporated. And circulated on or before next Wednesday.
It can be on or before.
On, on or before next Wednesday.
Before. It can be on or before.
Uh, uh, the rule says 24 hours and I'm speaking legal language, on or before. So it means Wednesday is later.
That's easy, good.
The, the rule says 24 hours. On or before Wednesday, letters miss 24 hours.
I'm talking about.
Correct.
So I'm speaking legal hours.
24 hour or more.
So, I haven't, haven't, haven't made that clear. With, uh, defer at the A or not. Uh, A.
What we defer.
Report on from the Attorney Committee, they say about the first and last Thursday. Senator, I'll be taking, uh, Senator, I'll be taking those.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Report from Senate Committee. Report from the Committee on Judiciary. Human Rights, Claims and Petition. On the draft Bill for an act to establish the term frame act. In appointed position in government.
Tell us something.
Use your committee.
Where you see me, I'm.
Folks live from the Liberian Senate at the grounds of the Capitol Building. Folks here at the. The chambers. Presiding is the Chair on Foreign Effects. Senator Eperens Daras De Long.
Thank you, Mister Presiding, my colleagues. Once again, I want to request improvement of this Bill. Uh, we endeavor to improve on the issue on the bill. We endeavor to get, uh, our colleagues to sign on to this. Uh, since 20 of last week. We need to see in getting the required, uh, signature. And we are still sending around this, this morning or this afternoon. For our colleagues, uh, for our colleagues to, to sign. So it's not ready, uh, action because it's not signed yet. We have the required number of signatures. And that is given there, our colleagues have required by our book. And so one that wants to be detailed, uh, to, yes, uh, choose it. Distinguished, upon the own judiciary. Comment, I was looking forward to. Taking my big statement on this bill. But as a distinguished colleague of mine, I will. Say yes, hopefully that. Give him a little bit support to continue to make sure that we can do signatures.
Any other concern? With no other concern, um, or defer about that to Tuesday?
There you rely.
So that mean the report will have to be circulated on or before Monday? Thank you. Next, Antolyn.
Report from Senate Committee. Dean, the report from the Joint Committee has already been there.
The motion of reconsideration, major world move, so proceed.
Then we now move to AOT. Briefing from the Westman final report. For my representative, of Grand Kukant.
Thank you.
Thank you, honorable Mr. Presiding. Mister Presiding. Distinguished colleagues. Pro Temmeritus, uh. Made amendment to the motion to receive the President communication. On the postponement of the submission of the only five orders. And our letter was requesting for the submission, the resubmission of the budget to be on the eighth. Having consulted and scrutinized the intent. Of the Pro Temmeritus as a. Strong provide officer. I want to inform this body. That the communication sent by the President. Was in Ofe. And that Farnaz is doing everything. To have the bodies submitted on the time. That was asked for on the eighth. So Mister Presiding, we are on course. And all the analysis. Uh, with regards to the intent of that communication has been assessed. And the Senate can rest assured. That the body will be submitted on the eighth of November. As it was previously in the communication of the President. So I want to make that clear. So there was no doubt in the submission. And I think we can begin to do our work right after the submission. Uh, with our colleagues in the House of Representatives. If it is required by the plan of the real Senate. If that, we have to wait for them to proceed with the. With the budget before we act as per the Constitution requirement. Thank you.
Uh, with the information that provided by the Chairman on Westman Farnaz. I would like to propose. A meeting of the Senate, a conservative meeting of the Senate in Nigeria after such a, in a potent conference.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Presiding.
Yeah, I can wish. I can wish we take a final decision.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Tell me immediately after. A meeting of the Senate of the Senators. In a potent conference.
Future on the outside will come back to report, Senate Committee. Report for the Committee on Judiciary, uh, on Labor and Judiciary. Human Rights Friends and Petition regarding concerns for the work of the firestorm. For the bits, again.
The same way colleagues, uh, today will to be debating. No, it was, uh, it skipped that in a way that. Adam C on, on six, Adam C. Report from the Joint Committee confronting the Committee on Labor and Judiciary. Uh, regarding, uh, concerns of the workers of Firestorm. Foundation for debate.
I think the committee churches.
The Joint Committee report, uh, Labor is leave and Judiciary. Of course. The Webber issue with African people have been circulated.
Yes, sir. Which we put it, sir?
Ask, uh, uh, C on your agenda. C on your agenda. Report from the, for the Joint Committee on Labor and Judiciary. That have to do with the complaint from the workers of Firestorm. That report have been circulated for weeks.
Presiding, uh. One of the issues that I think we face with. Is that. The agenda. To come so that we can be more prepared maybe in a day or four. But when you see the agenda happen. The time we receive the agenda sometimes. So we want to prepare our notes and prepare for it. While the, the document I've been researching a week ago.
We're ready.
We're not, yeah, we're not ready for. But I'm not, we're asking for universal policy, but I'm not ready for this. Because, uh, I'm not up to date on this plan. So I will, I will, I will, judges, I will not participate in this.
Uh, so, 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 so. So, so. Everyone who tried to join us. You will be aware that plain narrative decided on Thursday. And voted upon on Thursday that they debate on this report for the top days. They were deferred from Thursday. So, citizens are aware.
I'm not seeing it, uh, that I want to. I think I keep a little bit.
This report. Was prepared July 15. Morning 24. Circulation was done immediately. And the Senate, my distinguished here said they didn't get a copy. Here we will respond, have submitted copies. And it was deferred. And the following down, it would be five, but they said they didn't get a copy and I show receipts. That each of the offices receive a copy. The second time again, they said they didn't get a copy and give the additional copies. This is the second time that we are being deferred for debate. Third time. My question here is, to those of you who are from my difficulty. How many employees are within Firestorm? Are they more than 20,000? 20,000 or more employees from Firestorm submitted agreements. That they don't know official, they want you and I to listen to their problem and provide resolution. It will be deferred, why is deferred? You are not deferring on public who have got your money. But you want to defer on your citizens who have.
but you wanna defer on your citizens who have obtained. I don't know, from July, July. This is July. Why are you deferred?
So, they have a debate.
Thank you, Senator, thank you, Senator. Thank you, Senator, on the way. The, the, our report is open for debate. If you deal with the agenda that was adopted, from informed by the narrative, the judiciary law with Thursday. What I would suggest I would do, the secretary of the Senate would be the, the, before, the, the, not just a recommendation, give us a summary of what the complaint was, the findings of the committee and the recommendation for the narrative debate and action. Not a carry version, please.
You wanna look the version?
Hey, why you?
Reference, Firestone Workers' Union complaint filed by Senator Nathaniel Magir on behalf of the Firestone Workers' Union. By ground, the workers submitted that the Firestone subcontractors have engaged in unfair labor practices that they consider dehumanizing. The practices include what not limited to unjust labor, working all hours without pay, no benefits, such as school and medical services for themselves and their families on safe working conditions. The quote-unquote key factor concern which denies the employee of just any or gives contractual management more and more. On July nine, according to the fore, the Senate Committee on Labor and Judiciary, met with the Firestone Workers' Union regarding their complaints. In their deliberations, the workers mentioned the following problems for their employer. One, the tapas work long hours for overtime compensation. The tapas that have been contracted to tap and been tapping over the years are now being assigned to watch on the provision. See, medical services are suggested to full payment. The certain categories of our children are denied admission into the school system. Example, subcontractors given, most of the children do not have access to our school. There's only one high school in the Firestone Education System. The education system has also been outsourced. E, Firestone invalidates workers medically with old constitution and refer them to National Social Security and Worker Corporation Nasco for benefits. Upon arrival to Nasco, it is revealed that they are not eligible for Nasco benefits. When they return, when they return for work at Firestone, management tells them that their names have been removed from the payroll. F, hustling. A family was previously assigned to an apartment that consists of two bedrooms. That has been Firestone's hustling policy. Unfortunately, the contractors have changed the policy. An apartment is now assigned to two families. One family gets one bedroom. G, the quote-unquote key factor means the workers collect latex and transfer it to the waiting station and employers stole the latex overnight to extract sixty-five percent of water from the latex. The employer only paid for the balance thirty-five percent. However, the employee is easily not present when the latex is being weighed by the employer. Meeting with Firestone management and subcontractors during eleven point four. In response to the employees complaining that management of Firestone reported that their decision to sub contract its funds was mutual agreement between Firestone Management and the government of Liberia. Firestone told the government that its management is going out of business. It cannot and will not survive economically unless it outsources, it outsources the provision. The government has no objection to Firestone proposal to outsources the provision. Firestone also indicated that there is no clause would be a decent work ID law that requires them to regularize a contract employee into a full-time staff after the employee has sealed itself his first six months contract. On the issue of hustling, the contractual management agreed that some family members are double up in their apartments due to a increase in staffing. On the issue of medical services and education, two other four clinics are closed. Employees are required to pay, to make full payment for each medical visit. On education, the management says all students are entitled to education with what accepted, but there's only one high school on the provision. Firestone management says students will be transported by buses in the next budget year to the existing high school. Recommendation. In view of the complaints and deliberations from both parties, the Senate Committee on Labor and Judiciary recommend the following. One, that the workers complained be referred to the Minister of Labor under the direct supervision of the Minister of Labor to ensure appropriate resolution. In effect, this case was submitted to the Minister's office by Firestone Workers' Union on May twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-four or was, but was not attended to by the Ministry. Two, the Firestone should adjust its decision on the quote-unquote key factor to ensure that employees receive their just wages. Three, that employees possibly given appropriate accommodation to reflect decent living condition as envisioned by Firestone in its original hustling policy. Four, the Firestone plan to boss all eligible students from the divisions to the provisions only in high school be implemented as planned is next. Wanted here. That the government of Liberia should make plans to transition all fires and provisions school on its full responsibility. It is incumbent upon this government and all future governments of the Republic of Liberia to educate its children and citizens. Five, in violation to be reviewed by the Lord Ministry. Employees should not be immediately removed from employers' payroll upon referring to Nasco with all the concerns justification from Nasco. Six, tapping is the profession that guarantees the employees eligibility for employment. Management should always abide by if management employee contract. To change the term of the employee's contract, employer must ensure that there exists a clear and understanding and a rating concern between both parties. Seven, recommend an increase in employees' wages. And eight, recommend a decrease in the price of twenty-five kilogram rice. The Senate Committee on Labor and Judiciary will ensure a direct oversight on these matters. And recommendations here is during their deliberations at the Minister of Labor and will request physical presence to ensure transparency and full oversight. Sign, members of the labor committee and members of the judiciary committee. Mr. Presiding, of.
Distinguished colleagues, listening to of the complaints, the findings of the committees, also the recommendation of the matter is not only what we get.
There are many leads. As a. There are leads that is.
The, 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 the committee, the board, the board, the board. Senator Badikwa, followed by Senator Abashir. Senator, for, for the year, the hour, to decide yourself.
Yes, sir, man, from the addition of beyond outsourcing. Yes, I've seen in recent times where owners of companies now using outsourcing to reduce the benefits of employees. My opinion, the purpose of outsourcing is to increase productivity and efficiency. When you also direct release in a company and do make that, uh, the real specialized people. When one have been, one opportunity increases, revenue generally have to increase. And when revenue increases, benefit for employees will increase. Now, the other way around, we employ using that to punish, uh, the workers. So, my, what we can do is to look at it, to investigate and maybe, before we have a lot makers, propose bills to, to, to make sure that outsourcing is regulated. You know why I see Firestone, now Firestone, they're on this, they just outsourced. When they outsourced, it's okay, it's called, we have outsourced, the employer is entitled to, to help them. And that shouldn't be. I think should be the other way around, so you don't look ahead, or investigate, probably, you have not debate. Also, to see, to make sure that regulated, be regulated. That's my conclusion.
Senator Brown, followed by Senator Badikwa, Senator Agustin Chee, and Senator Smo, in our.
Thank you, Presiding. Distinguished colleagues, um, I understand the frustration of the chairman earlier when he thought that this planary was reneging on the business matter. I, I remember that it was the terror of all time disappear in the dinner and would not be debated, and I don't think, I'm wondering whether it's, is it because the Firestone that we wanna debate, I think some other company long time would have done it. But, but.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not.
You just want me, oh?
Nobody here, not all of them.
There are no one to talk to. What you think, what you think it is for you?
Senator Brown, you have to.
Um, there are few issues. All right, Mr. Presiding. There are few issues that, um.
All right, Senator.
Mr. Presiding, we need to be careful with words on the side here. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm bringing the Senator Brown order so that for the record, he can take it back for the record.
One minute, one minute, one minute, one minute, Senator, you have to. If your record last, you get your order. Senator Brown, please have your script.
Thank you.
Keep more the rule, stay your order.
My point of order here is straightforward. Senator Brown is either pretending or directly accusing the Senate of reneging the debate and the Firestone before it expires, and for the record, it has to be strapped out. That's my point of order, that he takes it back and discounter our records.
Okay, um, your, your, uh, order, please, your order is noted. The, the general, the senator is provisioned on Saturday morning, you don't know for why he says. So, for.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding, I, I appreciate that. The records are clear, the records are clear.
I'm saying. Listen, the general, the, 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 the.
Let me proceed, let me proceed.
Please proceed.
I'm, you're going to go from a.
Exactly.
The order they will make, they will ask for it here, you see? The gentleman was sitting here and say, I have put my point, that's crazy.
No, put your point and take it back, I think, the rest of the rules. Put your point and take it back, it's.
I would have gone, I would have gone, I'm, I'm confused by the recommendations. The very first recommendation says that, uh, we should refer. This is my job.
Like infer.
No infer, please proceed. Senator, you're on the left.
We should refer.
You're on the left. No, no, no infer to your.
Senator Smo, why you go on?
Senator Brown.
Everybody, 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 nobody refuse itself.
Please proceed. No, I want me to, that issue was nothing deeper. And I think in that matter, so, uh, my brother that. My brother is Firestone lawyer. The statement you made was correctly against Firestone, I think you are correct. You could, you could never, proceed.
So, when I was making the question.
Senator, please, I can't.
Ah, hey, man, you say.
I'm about to go, you tell her here.
I tell you, you have to.
Colleagues, let's be.
You are saying something about.
This boy on the. What I'm saying is that the very first recommendation from the joint committee says that this sentence should refer this case to the Minister of Labor. But then they came down with number of other recommendations, so I'm a bit confused. Then we will send this to go back. All of who refer to the ministry there, why all these recommendations? If we endorse these recommendations and the minister having to come up with different decisions, how would that happen? But nevertheless, I listened to the reading of some of the findings. The Firestone is saying because the firm is getting unproductive and so they inform the Labyrinth Government, I don't know through which channel. The Labyrinth Government that they wanted to privatize. And that's how the subcontractor.
Or outsourced.
Outsourced. Sorry, outsourced, the, the, the labor component. And they contracted the broad in has brought in some measures that are harming the, the employees, that's the cause of this matter. If I wanted to know from the committee, have they, have they, have they contacted the, the, the committees like, uh, concessions? Uh, the Ministry of Labor to see what, what recommendations the Firestone made to the Labyrinth Government? Because right now, any issue is the Labyrinth Government. The other, the report is saying that Firestone said, look, where we are, we're not being profit. So, they wrote the government, our concession agreement that we want to do X, Y, Z. So, we need to see what consent the Labyrinth Government give Firestone that are good bribes of these states. Uh, the third, third thing I would ask them, I wanted to take note, I wanted to take note is that have they reviewed the firestone agreement? Has it relates to this? We need to review the firestone agreement. The committee, the joint committee need to review the firestone agreement to see what, what the employees are saying uh, are, are true, are, are, and agreement, what does the agreement say about this? So, these are the concerns that I have. But I think colleagues, we need to take this very seriously. Um, Firestone has been around for a very long time and hearing about labor, by labor practices, our, our people coming here to us, I think we should take them seriously. But let's do it, uh, very carefully. Um, we need to look at the, the concession agreement, that's it. What does the agreement say? And then two, get in the government sectors that are responsible for Firestone. Because Firestone is saying they inform our government that they are going to take these measures. They need to see what has been, what, what has been the response? What did our government approve for Firestone to do in line with, with these measures? So, I, I want to say that, but the key thing, committee is that, um, maybe you need to verify, um, before you vote on your recommendations. You think you are saying, send this, this complaint back to the Minister of Labor, but then you have some other measures soon approved, I don't know how. This is a concern, send it, Mr. Presiding.
Labor issues.
Um, Senator Badikwa, uh, our is Christian narrative, Reverend, uh, Senator Badula after Badikwa.
Questionnaire. No problem.
Mr. President, thank you very much. I think we want to take our colleague, Chair of Labor. I think besides the labor issue, we don't extensive, we don't have.
Don't do it.
Because, you know, housing.
One minute, Senator Batiqua, Senator Brown.
Senator Brown.
Senator Brown. Please call Senator Brown. He should be later, please don't leave it, okay? After Senator Wuhan, you can send her to the meeting.
Yes.
You have to be there.
Yeah.
Senator Batiqua, please proceed, Senator.
I think, President, I mean, most of the recommendations they made are to the point. And rightfully they said that we should ask the Minister of Labor to take charge. The recommendations are already identified and are made to address the issues. And since we cannot enforce, to me, I think your recommendation is in the right direction. We should ask the Minister of Labor to take charge and ensure that all of the recommendations they made are followed. Because, I can remember, Firestone was invited here about the issue of this retirement business. And the employees complained that whenever they are retired, they complained that if you wait, for them to be taken over by the social security, automatically they move them off the payroll. The refrain order, six times, is again reflected in this report. I think the President, uh, of the sign, that these issues are very key. They must ask the Minister of Labor, that is, really responsible for the affair of employees to take charge of these issues. Since we cannot enforce, and they already have verified the issues and recommend measures to address it. That's why I want to say, thank you.
Senator Babla. Thank you, Mr. Chair, this was colleagues for giving me a discussion at this time. I want to say thank you to the Chief of Charge of the Committee on Labor, I am a member of. I think the first recommendation says that a complaint should be referred to the Minister of Labor. And understandably, the legislature cannot implement all of these things. So I think it's in the right that all that were identified as issued during the investigation should be referred to that project. But again, the committee, they said that the company had been lying before they released stuff for long, and they had to look into it. So this should just be a reinforcement of whatever companies, of the Firestone, whether. Having said that, during this investigation, one issue came up that we need to look into. And that has to do with loan contractors, which is denying the people full employment benefit. In the, during the investigation, who are made to understand that the decent way they will remove the time limitation, they can keep an individual as a contractor. So, it is not being practiced by almost all of the concessions in the country. People go as contractors, sometimes they stay a year or two, they just there. And whenever they, 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 the company decides, they just let it go, and say your contract is over. So there's no job security. So we need to look at that issue very, very carefully, to make sure that we address some of the issues that come from the concession. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator Batula. Senator, um, Agustin Chee, Father, Senator Smo.
Let me move this way. No, you have right. Mr. colleagues, uh, let me start first by verifying that the submission of the recommendations to labor, it was purpose of guidance, uh, to guide them in the investigation. The other thing I want to speak to, it's about the legality of, uh, what has happened. For our labor law, it is not permissible for an employer to promote an employee or to reduce the status of an employee. Um, and so, in the same question where, uh, the Firestone happens, through and through, um, um, with the issue in concession, where employees, uh, permanent employees, uh, for that matter, and after a period of time, um, their employment was outsourced to a agency or another company or organization. Then of course, uh, it could not have been done properly, unless where Firestone prior to the outsourced negotiated with the workforce to be transferred to the, uh, the outsourced entity, and there was an agreement, and this will be done. And the only way to do that is to terminate their services. Pay them off, pay them servants' benefits. Then, they are rehired by the, uh, the outsourced entity. It's not a coincidence that, uh, this was done. That's not, that's not, that's not, that's not information we got. We don't think that this was done. And so to guess, uh, uh, who, uh, permanent employees from their situation, from where they sit with it, as employees, and make them contractors on the, uh, an outsourced company is, uh, by labor parties, is, uh, is, uh, is not fair labor parties. It's, 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 it's illegal. It can be done. I want to say we want for Minister of Labor to look at. If the labor should investigate what are indeed prior to the outsourced. There was a understanding problem between the Firestone management and the management of the water union, that, uh, the positions of the top was whoever's employee was would be outsourced to the outsourced company, and that, and then that, uh, that, uh, all of the legal requirements, all legal for managers, uh, was followed. That's what I, that's what I think we want for, 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 for labor to do. The labor, if the Firestone did not do that, then of course, then the outsourced was, was, was to be, they could not, they, they, they could not do so. So that, that, that is key, that is key, because you know, we have a good regard here for. Uh, and yes, and these are myself, from the, uh, private sector, I understand that it can do happen. Uh, for a number of reasons, when, uh, uh, um, companies or private entities, uh, have this kind of problems, they tend to, uh, restart to, uh, try to use that one's safe pass, and I'll make them to afford, uh, with their investments. So one of them is, uh, is how, one of them is passing. One of them is, uh, is, uh, is, uh, is closing down, probably in the factory or in unit or, or, or a reduction in workforce. So in the case, Firestone, so that they better to take on this house, uh, the blood of tackles, everybody, so it was, uh, to outsourced company. But again, there are these advantages that, 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 that come with, uh, the outsourced. In this case, it's our information that the employees that have, that had, uh, household facilities, some don't have anymore. If they, if they still have, that means that if you have two bedroom, the two bedroom, that may due to months. And other, other incentives that were entitled to by virtue of the employment, are all taken away. This should be entitled to medical, for themselves, their family, their dependents. Some don't have, the outsourced company not to buy that. It should be entitled to, to annual leave, annual vacation, vacation pay leave. Nobody entitled to that. Nobody entitled to that. That's unfair, the gold passage. Firestone have been here for a very long time. And nobody are telling that Firestone is not making money. Yeah, there will be recession sometime, sometime the, uh, the volatility, when the prices, it down, down, sometimes up, sometimes down. Yes, it happens in areas. But that will not be the reason why Firestone would take such a drastic decision. And so outsourced, all of the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, tackles, tapping the up, everything, uh, for outsourced company, that is not providing this incentive to our people. And I want to say, what we want to look at? What kind of incentives are the, uh, is the outsourced company giving to the employees? Because before then, they have housing, they have medical, they had, uh, uh, education, a, a, a facility, a body, is it? Are they still guaranteed facility? Are they still guaranteed incentive?
So what did the investigation show?
So, uh, no, no, like, like me. They say, they say no, some of them say no. But we want labor to do the final investigation, very important to us. That's the deep, the investigation, what for labor to do. So it's very important that, uh, that, uh, that's why we provide the guarantee. Hello, labor, this is what we have found, please go ahead and, uh, investigate, to confirm, to validate, uh, our finding. And what labor does, and can do, and of course, then, uh, there will be added on, uh, whatever, um, something. Thank you.
Senator Smo, I do want to ask the Chairman of the Committee. Your Chairman, are your recommendations? Is that we should follow the path of, of labor? And at the same time, can we mark up, maybe for labor? So how do you, what do you say that, after last week of floor?
Well, thank you, uh, thank you, President. Um, at the time that we were meeting with Firestone workers, as well as the chairman and the recording. And the workers complained that submitted the report to labor, and the labor has obeyed labor, the language, what, that's what they give to us. And so we invited labor, both into the, we both made it for chairman and, and workers. And when we concluded the submission, the recommendations, uh, it was about the one that had the workers, junior, and Firestone were about to go into negotiation. So since we were kind of delaying the process, I sent the papers of the recommendation to the Minister and the Department of Trabata, that are responsible for negotiations with Firestone workers, who are the, our workers. And told them that this is the recommendation that the Senator, the CCR Senator had reached. So we don't want you, labor, to come up with different decision, to all want to be on the same path. So we said that's how we see this person, or one similar says, send a document to Minister of Labor. So labor has acted on this document, based on our recommendation. Uh, labor does not have any other decision other than the decision of the Senator. Now, uh, I want to add one more thing. Because we said, Firestone should, government should start building high schools for Firestone, for students. Since nineteen twenty-six, Firestone has been running this organization without a high school. Without a high school, since nineteen twenty-six, we got one high school. And so they are now talking about bossing the students. What if that one breaks down? So now what happened to the student, what happened in this, obviously?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, welcome back then. Senator Smo.
So, Mr. President, now, uh, while the Chairman of the Labor was announced clearly as he, as he says, hoping the report regarding Firestone is quite alarming. All the law, so, for Firestone, in Firestone, in Firestone, to treat our people like, really, they are treated sad, very sad. To have contractors. I was just talking to my colleague, the local council, the law of the.
Senator, give us now. You go back to, you can't hear, free Senator, Tal, so we can hear.
But Tal, that is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, so, President, you, you, so, actually, we need to take it seriously. I mean, even if they have contractors, to put two families in the two bedroom flat in this day and age, that, that, that's a stupid. Firestone, oldest company in this country. And to this day, even though the ninety-year-old manufacturer won't cast a bed. There's a company, there are a few, I think, we have a, a few rubber. And giving, you don't have a post, it is a big, right? Before the war, there were other American companies here. You do surprise, and tell me somebody from the Jewish, or they were dead, and say, anything of Firestone, they say, yeah, Firestone, yeah, who was such? You want to scare the top of Firestone business? Before the war, there were other American companies there. He was here, he brought a kid prayer, they had buses carrying the children to school, where Americans stand up. Best practice. Firestone treated gold on a plantation. They got teenagers, children are so being in school, tapping rubber, because they don't need the daily prayer for their family. Firestone has set this example as our tradition, as a company that reflect our, quote-unquote, traditional partner. What they doing, what they, President? Acting more than what the committee is reporting. They send a show, you visit there. Let's play a visit at plantation, see what happening. I mean, to treat our people like that, two families in one, in, in, in two bedroom flat, no medical benefit, no education. How can Firestone have a plantation of over twenty thousand employees? And say, we will book, they won't fit in high school? I mean, how? So I just want to close by, others are taking the committee for, 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 for such a detailed report. I think the report should be indulged, but in addition to that, let's play a visit. You see sometime, because, President, we have said, sometime when they talking about agriculture, and other country are producing cocoa and coffee, when they once seen it, they showing teenagers. It doesn't reflect on those company, it reflects on the country, on the political, they don't share the country. I'm sure Firestone were from Asia, and I want Asia company, but now in our future, the German, they say, exonerate child labor in Firestone. Or for others using, we can see, but it's happening there. It's happening there, and it's serious, because I think we should take this thing seriously. There are some called Firestone here. They walk on our meetings on ground, and send us in a meeting on Sancho. So they can send in our meeting. But they represent country, why they do send out on Sancho, and they, and they there? So it goes in, they will shut down, but they send out on Sancho. They walk on our meeting. Which was a disrespect to the Senate, or would that left it, because of Firestone? I'm sure that I'm also in the Bravo Brown company for him. Where he said, because of Firestone, he meant anything, say this stuff up. When he come to someone, he compare the people, and Fred won't go on Sancho. Get Sancho here, definitely was a boy here, level they come in, and they are very come in, when you fuck with your boy, you also. Probably on Sancho, but it's wrong. They treating our people like slaves. You can go stop to it, yeah, I didn't do that, I want to tell you, yeah, they helped you go to school. But it's wrong, what they do is wrong to our people. And for an American company to treat a person like that, I mean, it's, it's, it's a disgrace to Firestone, to treat our people like that. No proper education, no healthcare, you have no proper disability condition, billing with low wages, and using teenagers. Child labor is being practiced at Firestone. I submit this, so, so, so. I submit this to Pizari.
Senator Snow, what are you?
Don't tell me the very detail.
Please, Pizari.
Pizari make guarantees, he said. Pizari make guarantees, he said, I better win, Pizari.
You say you want guarantees, you want hash, so what?
Yeah, I want the guarantees. Or there's another group that will fight that.
So Pizari, thank you for your opportunity to make some contribution to this debate. I co-chair the committee, assign a report. But I'd like to indicate that what is true, that this report, to some extent, there's some issues. Despite the fact that this is a, or send it somewhere, like the ministry of labor, to superintend the execution of the decisions that been reached. The first thing has to do with outsourcing. I spent a report, Firestone indicated that it informed the government that you go paying well if you don't outsource. We haven't been able to establish from government, from the area, whether that is true. And if that is true, what is the government's position, or what is our position on that? We need to have a position on this. And it remains, a many portion of the innocent worker are needed to do that. Because when we legislate, I'll just tell you something, the snow, and shadows and the snow, and the tower. That the problem we have, is that when we legislate, because in terms of that, the practice has been that these companies will employ our people and give them benefits, and provide them also pension pay. But when we legislate, they say, what I, and increase the minimum wage, then they realize, okay. We've increased the minimum wage, but we have a way to shut off the process. So that when we pay the minimum wage, we don't get affected, our operations will not get affected. That increase, that increment on the minimum wage is what the fact will move in another way. So in a sense, we do like that, that they only employ our people, the fact that we increase the minimum wage, they will not employ the people. They will not keep presenters in the move. It's not the way of firestone, it's almost everywhere now. All the companies are doing that. And if that is a trend, then we need to see how we go back to, that's it, we cannot have it lingering. And every time we have complaints on our people, before us, as we speak, one of the major issues that been training has to do with pension pay. That many companies, some of them, were accepted a lot. When they pension an employee, they refer you to NASCAR. When they go to NASCAR, then NASCAR says, especially for those who haven't read Retirement Aid. Let's be realistic, nobody will count seven hundred, eight hundred trees every day, and transport one thousand pounds or two thousand pounds of latest water sugar for twenty-five years. When you are retired, maybe at the age of forty or thirty-five, or forty-five, and you'll still be saying, you'll still be, oh, that's impossible. And when you retire Retirement Aid, I spent a couple of years ago, saying you haven't reached a pension age. You go to NASCAR, NASCAR will say you haven't reached the age of sixty, okay, that give you pension pay. So why our infant would be affecting you, whatever will be the situation, health situation. You are new on your own, before employment, before pension pay, before retirement benefit. You think there's a Firestone or concession issue or the law that we have regarding that, or pension? I'm highlighting, it's both, okay, the leadership issue and the legal issue. The leadership issue is the problem before us, okay? So we need to have the political will to make the national leadership decision, that's that. I'm speaking as part of by representation portion, I'm representing the people, bringing the issue to attention of this line area. So that we can legislate the appropriate amendment to the decent worker act, that's it. Beyond that, we submit that, we, we, there have been an amendment to the decent worker act, since the fifty-four legislature here. We came here, the first day we appeared here, I flagged that issue. It was never gonna even come on the floor, we fought it, come on the floor. When the committee ruled, we deliberately, we came, they said, the regional committee should be a part of it. We did that, we came, the chairman, then he came to me again, he said, our police are refusing to sign because they say they want to see the original idea. I had to call the police, I knew. And the papers were sent to the chairman. I know if our police was able to read it, or whether they hadn't read it. But now, which right, legislate or pass on that bill, that is, to tell you to adjust the issue of pension pay, and all the issues. That affecting our people. We have to be able to do that. Our future is affecting the interest of our people on the plantations. There's not only a vast issue, it's everywhere. So, I want, President, I'd like for us to, I would like to hear from the chairman, my chairman, because I co-chair the committee. What is the current status of the amendment to the decent worker act, again before us? Since the fifty-four, we came here, the first day, I flagged it, we flagged it back times. Whenever we come, some people say, oh, we want to read the law. Okay, we have the law. As the chairman gave us, some people signed, some people said, we have no help, they are ready to sign the report. So that we can pass on, I think it's important, it's in the collective interest of all of us, to pass on this amendment. And issue of outsourcing, we need to review it, the labor minister needs to come here. We need to get the perspective of the executive branch of government. And this has to be renegotiated or negotiated with the concession companies. We have to do that, we have to negotiate an amendment to the decent worker, or expect to get outsourcing. We have to do that. If the new trend is that you, you self-contract, let's have a provision in the law on self-contract. Let's do an amendment to that, that's that. And we cannot keep sitting here on the counter. So I want, Chairman, I don't concur by any taken that. Let me concur by any taken that. Yes, I see, we need to look at the issue of outsourcing, in respect with the decent worker act. The issue of retirement bill that is before us, I like for the chairman to offer us one status. And I like to encourage my colleagues, so that we take a positive decision to pass this amendment to decent worker act, reflecting pension pay. They also, the labor ministry needs to come here, interact with us, so that we clearly understand what the government official thinks. And how we move forward, there are too many issues. You know, when you, when it is not, it's easier to legislate a law. But when a law is enforced, then you begin to see somebody who doesn't accept the, of the law, and we are at that point. So we are the one, we need to review those, the shortcoming, the decent worker act, and then do an amendment. But I was telling, we have one before us, that's part of that, thank you.
Thank you, Senator, no problem, the amendment, you're talking about the fifth amendment to, uh, section twenty-two. Co- tell you this, uh, point one. He take seven point one. Yeah?
Yeah, I see.
No, I want to be clear.
Yeah.
Okay, I have company of the Ashram, I have, we'll take your coffee, Ashram. I think it's nice, Senator, uh, where, follow by several of the young one, in our.
Pizari.
No, and then, Senator, Tera, less than a jar.
Pizari, I want to thank you for.
And I still respect who was in the jar, I think.
Thank you, let me say, let me say to you, very much. Yes, we should, we are, we are bad, now we are discussing, this is a serious issue for our people. People who somebody is wishing out of the bargaining, that decision here, I'm sorry, give up our, to give before our people. There's a serious issue that we have to, we have to take seriously, because I know the situation out there. Or the previous three of what happened at the plantation, I don't know. Uh, it's automatable. So, when you, when you understand, I live division territory one.
Is it my issue for you?
Yeah, my issue. I live division territory one. Yeah, I have to say, I'll say.
No, you can say.
Thank you. I'll leave you more. So, I live division territory one, and I sincerely say to you that, uh, I had a uncle who was a superintendent at the division. And you wouldn't believe that, at that division, when Firestone decided to outsourced a plantation, maybe one of the plantations, they don't take territory one. They're bringing their own contractors, they're bringing their, their colleagues, that was four superintendent people, to take charge of that plantation. That, that, that was not considered, that every time they're bringing their colleagues to take charge of their own plantation. Firestone, we have an agreement, extra agreement with that in battle. And that superintendent, four superintendent, will also have an agreement with, 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 with the workers that was on that plantation. It will be, it will be of the same, or agreement with Firestone, it will be far more different from the agreement between T and Firestone. Because of proper margin. If you make me like two say, let's say Firestone to Firestone, when it's outsourced, that plantation to that superintendent, he makes his rules. They can retain you, what they have to pay you, have a, a latest score, a wire, a tap in there, and every other thing. They do, you also have to talk to Firestone, on certain agreement, that, that Firestone gave you portion of the paper to me, that you have to prepare for this time, because you have no number on the, on product of Firestone. This is a whole is the situation that I previously stated. I can recall when I said he came to the bar, I remember we created, the woman went to, the woman went to Firestone. But all happened by a city commision, and I don't know about this situation, about how people are, are like, how they are conditioned. I would simply say to you that, if the money, the little tab of a contractor, tab of me, all is spent on credit here. You have a lot of proportion, proportion there, proportion of anything where you go, before the closing of the month, you have to go and spend all of that money. Doesn't give you nothing, absolutely nothing. And I think serious, all of the, all of the, all of the, the information is all in book, it's transforming our people life. Labor must, 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 to enter the bad situation. There's a whole issue, send nineteen twenty-two Firestone, they need to stop it. Let me re- say, so I say sorry, send that to the six, what happened now? Why is so much of our contract or possession that cannot change? What do you still front to, why, why is that for our people? And it's a matter that we don't think, the job is that every time we come out to see situation, and we reference ourselves, yes, and yet, and not is going to die.
Senator, why you do with the power?
I believe that, if we stay to our senses, and get our, and get our record, give me our record, and just to labor ministry. Then I go after and see how bad the condition of our people was.
If the labor ministry does have to do nothing about it?
Then, then we, for, for, for a long time, and then you, you, you stop?
And then the firestone, they say?
You know the record to go? Oh, yeah, yeah.
You can say now.
I can say that, you know the record to go. So, we have to be serious and help our people, by actually bringing, yeah, and petition. Even down to, even if they propose to still press you wrong. The way you, the way you press them, they're wrong, wrong treatment. You have to go and go, they also have a, a, they are extra they want, is herbar. I didn't have a, you know how I know why I fought, for since we're in the army, and I live on the plantation. So I know why you think about what you're talking about, I know how I'm putting it there, where you put it, you put herbar, and there's a, thank you also much.
Senator, I want, I want to say a manual.
Thank you, Pizari. I want to begin by comparing the team, my, and Pizari, see, Mr. President, and the honourable senator from Grand Digger County, and this committee for his further report. Mister Pizari, Firestone did not outsource anything. All Firestone did was, what the honourable senator from Hong Kong did was a duty. Yes, look at each division controlled by each superintendent, compared to the superintendent, or owner, or contract owner, and after the decent worker act was passed, and after series of events, NASCAR was out. A few things happened and led to this whole thing. Number one, there's nobody mentioned one of them, which was the minimum wage. By the time the minimum wage was increased, Firestone got nervous. Uh, right around that same time, the competition rate also increased at NASCAR, at one percent. Meaning, the employer was now paying additional one percent for the employer, thirty percent, I think, over four percent. And then usually, the employer, each of them went from one point to seven five percent to two percent. So many Firestone, left from paying three percent to pay around six percent, that made it extremely nervous. So, the minimum wage was set, pension contribution rate, but there were also, a, in a consolation, gave up to them. The decent worker at the time recognized that, since what, Firestone was paying forty percent pension to retirees. At the same time, when it turned sixty, Senator NASCAR retired, NASCAR's own law, that also terminated their all terminated position. Uh, when we terminated pension, there was a pension host at the ministry of finance and CSE, where you work up to the fire, but many retire, but then you put your payroll. So some forty, forty-five years, where, you know, getting retired, one pension, while they're doing their different practice job. So that pension was terminated, to move on to the, to sixty, when you turn sixty before government can get rid. That's why people are no longer retiring in government, you know, after twenty-five years. The decent work bill, when it reverberates NASCAR, because they didn't have much time to talk about pension. And that's why the, the amendment is very necessary to focus, yes, on pension. I don't want to say for the partners, or whoever the time, they, they say they just recognize NASCAR as the existing pension law of the country. Then Firestone saw the look go, that mean I cannot pay you forty percent when you retire. I would have gone to ten sixty after you've NASCAR. You, you see what it was, it comes from. So it's a, it's a complex matter that requires serious review for the review, and the men, the decent worker law, they just focus on pension. Why that money, that, why that law saves government of money from paying young people retiring? They also injuring our people, I'm seeing now, who are forty-five, forty years, who have done the latest for twenty years, you can load them up, you know, wait till turn sixty before you can get a pension. Now, why we waiting for that amendment, Mister Pizari? There are existing, you know, clause, we've been in the current law, that Firestone is already validating, that the ministry of labor and listening community should go after them. Session thirteen point two, the rights to convert casual employees to part-time or full-time employees. It is all level, the work and pleasure of the employees, not the employer. For that time, I will not go into detail, but everything written in session thirteen point two, always tells you, it is a employee choice to let the community know. And the community must write you four weeks before the expiration of, of that contract, after six months, you know, whether you want to be full-time or part-time. It didn't give any rights to Firestone.
It didn't give any rights to fires too, or whoever, to choose whether you should remain a casual laborer. It should be you, who should tell the community, no, I want to be casual, but it shouldn't be that, you should transition straight to full-time if you wish. So we need to investigate, fires too is writing people, prior to the expiration of that six month contract, whether they want to be full-time employee, or casual employee, it is very clear, that means it's good. It is very clear, it is the choice of the employee, and that compression that you're talking about. There's a gap there, there's one group of people, who, when the transition was taking place, who were already on contract for two, three years, automatically they should have become employees. They shouldn't have taken them under the new management, whatever they tell them about the households, people know, so we need to investigate a standard that group. Whatever backlog they owe them, they become automatic employees, entitlements, and everything they gave on to them. Then we can now ask the team, if the transition were also illegal one, on their own free work, and in last day to also make sure. That the compression from part-time employee to full-time employee, they have insurance within this high, in this terrible appropriate, and rest.
Thank you, uh, thank, uh, fire, every parliament. Since, uh, senior chair, follow the, uh, the Gbox Smith, and then, uh, we'll close this, uh, the law about Senator, about Senator somewhere. Thank you, thank you, Chair. Senator, if I remember it well, you came aside and left, and the rules say when you can't leave, you don't talk. Yeah. Thank you, Chair and colleagues. My, my, I told you this on, with you. The issue that has to do with, with labor issues. I believe, the Labor Ministry was established to handle labor issues in our country. Maybe the Labor Ministry is underfunded, and so, they are not working adequately, to ensure that labor issues are handled before getting to office. This issue is not just tied down to fires too alone. Everybody complaining on labor issue, but could be there with the issue that has to do with pension. But, I sound that we call them member of that committee, the reason why we send it to the Labor Ministry, because they are responsible to enforce and implement labor issues. But, if we realize that, all the concession in the country, maybe, we need to continue to call it the Labor Ministry for years. And maybe to provide for him some educational, or other tool, where the way he, he should treat our people. Because, they should monitor. All the concessions there. But right now, all the complaint we make is, we complaining here, we do there, we do that, we do that, no senator here has the power to go on the field and implement those things that have to do with labor. It is true, the Labor Minister. But nothing happening. Right now, if you went in our county, the same thing, everybody complains, everybody complains. Even while we wrote on paper, that they should do, they will reflect on it, they will reflect on it, and nothing may happen. And our people, and that's why all of us, we lost our own respect, because we hate all the law, but they are not enforced, they are not implemented. Until we start implementing those laws, and the set of ministry that are responsible to enforce these laws. Until the student will encounter the problem we encounter here, and will come here every day to discuss those things, because our time, one day should be doing a work. So I will say, thank you, Senator, for what we wanted, but, I think we need to open our eye more on the Labor Ministry, all the Ministry of Labor. Maybe they are underfunded, they don't have enough inspectors in the field, to observe those things, and to act on it before the people start talking about it. Because, if you look at the population, most of the people don't even read the labor law, but if the Labor Ministry, Ministry has sound or agents in the field, although inspectors. And they are monitor, they are monitoring everything, I think this country will go better, and because, even right here in Moravia. Job that laborers should do. A country job, they have, everyone has a job, common jobs, that, that laborers should be doing, they are right here in Moravia, and they refuse or even monitor that, and to enforce it. So we have issues, and all issues are so great in the extent that, we need to call the Labor Minister here almost every month. To ensure that those things happen, so I want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Senator, can you pass someone, and yes, and Senator Gbox Smith will talk about.
So thank you, Mister Babbitt, uh. I remember the committee, and, uh. And the way of everything that I'm, I'm growing on, I'm nice too. I think you've given me the best opportunity, I see anything at this matter, at this point too. So, the first thing is, I am not clear with what this key factor is. That allows people to work overtime, and don't get paid for overtime. I wonder whether they will, sadly, be refused to work without for overtime. I wonder. So you not get paid for anything, so why you working? And why we are complaining like fires too have been working hard so hard? I mean, I want to say. So, I probably hope. Where we had one of the best high schools in this country, all concessions, all, and that was just not concession. One. Fires too are very another than any other competition, our better facilities, improve our. At this point, it is not fair to our people, they didn't even have to come to complain. Again, Resari, the Ministry of Labor has a crucial responsibility to handle this issue, are they reminding other responsibility, or are they in code? For the view of fires too. These are great matters, our people, better facilities, and we need to talk to these people who want to work in our cause, general benefit, and have to what is supposed to be our people. I will go with the recommendation set by the, the committee, our report which are signed. Uh, with respect to hearing the Ministry of Labor, we, we think they do, they are not responding. We need to hear from them on this matter, and I will also agree with the speakers, who said that we should go to the plantation ourselves, side this, and, and let's see what's going on there. Let's talk to one of these people ourselves, because sometimes when they come to these meetings, they don't say everything because they are afraid. And they will get fired tomorrow. So we speak with them personally, and let's, not just the issue, so we don't have to trouble them, and that's, that's most efficient, thank you, boys.
Senator Gbox Smith, and then we take our motion.
Yeah, take the motion.
Senator Gbox Smith, and then we take our motion, Senator, why you morning, we take the motion.
Thank you very much, Resari. Mister Resari, this is my Senator. The issue for this question. In my mind. Two things responsible. One. We as a country must say. To look at our labor laws. The policies, will they stick? Because I think, Liberia as a country is not in control of the fate of these people. And maybe we are being hunted by the ghost of the party. Because. They have hard profile, people managing government, at the same time, who are lawyers for fires too, even after Baade was lawyer for fires. When I was议员, I was Senator, in this building, he was fires too lawyer. This, so what we are seeing, we, we are not guessing. And so. Because of the report, we are focusing on fires too. But, the problem facing labor force of this country is releasing. Every aspect of our workforce, from the community. All of our citizens are crying. Mister Resari. You go to the money sectors, the investors, the management treats our people the way they want to treat them. NGOs will come here, employ our people, they will work, about a year or six months for their NGO, time to finish, they will make sure, they will, I don't get rid of the workers, because they don't want for you to get anything. Resari. I happy to be Chair of the Labor Committee for the past two years. I had an opportunity to interact with concession of the labor force. I've visited some of the companies. When we interact closely with our people, they don't have what, in the system of the world, to protect them. You don't have that, they, they, they don't trust. And even today, in our country, we are one country with two labor laws. Fires too and other companies are saying that, well, we pay four percent. And so, when we retire you, go to NASCAR, NASCAR will settle you, so give you a twenty, and fires too employ you. And you have to wait for twenty-five years to reach retirement, at the age of forty-five, fires too say go. When you go to NASCAR, NASCAR say you have to be sixty years before you benefit from our.
You say we got two labor laws?
Yeah, I say, yeah, the practices.
Who, who passed them?
But, the one I'm coming to. This, that ties the issue. And so why fires too sending you to the NASCAR, and NASCAR say you have to wait until you become sixty years, your faith depend on God for the fifteen years, from forty-five to sixty. Before you can guarantee.
Who's all of this?
At the same time.
Senator Smith?
Yes.
You have dealt with a serious issue.
And that's exactly what I'm trying to state, Resari, am I guessing what I'm saying? Am I guessing?
I'm not suggesting that I'm guessing. I'm asking.
Probably, yes.
No, I engage you.
Yeah.
That, that, that's a serious issue. That we have two labor law on a subject issue, and a.
Labor practices.
Yeah.
And so.
Who should remedy that?
What is what I'm saying?
Okay, come to here now.
Okay. And so, one of the other fires too, and the other companies say, I say, when you are retired, the cost to pay four percent for you, go to the NASCAR.
That one?
That one, that one I serve. Like, when I was Chair of the Labor Committee, we had a party here, yeah. And like to us that, for us, as much we paying four percent to NASCAR. What we can do is, six months for your retirement will go and will carry you through your pre-retirement counseling. There are six months from now, you will be retired. When you are retired, this is package for you, then we send them to NASCAR. So then we don't have two labor practices on that issue.
So now the question of.
As a country.
Yeah.
So why can't we take a decision on it?
Who create, who are creating that problem, and the two laws?
This is the, the weakness of our system.
No.
Because they are not clear, why some company, returning you, sending you to, to NASCAR, for, for NASCAR to decide.
How can that problem be solved?
This is why the national, Mister Resari, if you listen, you can listen to me, hey, can I talk about, about police thing? National issue I made a, a decision on it.
So there are two laws.
Yeah.
Who passed the two laws?
The laws for practices. And it is to be based on the weakness of our system.
So there are two practices looking out.
And what I'm looking at.
So can we single out, sorry, can be one, that be the.
Exactly.
That be the solution, right?
That's what I'm saying.
Uh-huh, okay.
That's what I'm saying, I will have this in my answer.
Okay.
So thank you very much.
Thank you, uh, Senator, uh, uh, so panel for a few seconds, and then.
Thank you. Thank you, President, thank you. District Police, I've listened to Chairman on Labor, I've listened to the report, Resari, District Police. I can be from one another. I agree with the Senator from Bombay, Senator Snow, and, and away from Bo. Uh.
Senator, who?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you. Police. I've listened to the report, it's clear. It was clear, but look, let me from one another. We are the referee, cannot be flared like same time. What do I mean? Their executive, it has the power to implement. It has the power to implement, but, for all the time we do our best, the best law, we'll send it out there, for the implementation of it, that's why I'm making the report for a hard time. Everybody there, second their politician, they want to be free away for such a year. The Labor Minister, I said a bit to a resident, will do the best law, in the first place. Those people, you, attention on them, you will now want for every October, or a child be educated, on that plantation. If I have a plantation in Brandyde, and you tap in my farm, and get three, four children, while getting a good education, who will replace you? I try to bring the people of my Guinea, and all of this. And, and the government, I block your area, they just say nothing, you and myself, when I go out there to work, the memory I outside, I always told the labor people, the Ministry of Labor from Guinea, it's a laborer. So when we pass.
The chairman, Andy Arrow.
Okay, when we pass it, it's all the best. It's your labor. It's a bottom door, it's a bottom down.
Bottom door.
Let me see the bottom door, and you snow. Thank you, thank you, so, uh, we shall present the District Police. Let us ask the executive, the Ministry of Labor, to comply to this report. Comply to this report, all of that, when I get nothing out of it, we just talk here because we are audition, but the executive should be going in professional law to the fullest. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator, why?
Thank you.
Before, Senator, why, before you make the order, call it that, I mean. Our people look to the lesson they tell especially the Senate, for almost everything. If there's a traffic out there now, you see what the senators want. Our goal is to pass a given law, and to make the environment conducive, for our people to get private sector jobs, for them to get empowerment. One of the things we've done here is to pass labor laws, within it. We pass this in every laws, and we pass it on the executive to the folks, and if the executive, if that impulsive, we get the eating, we get the playing, we get the. we get the playing, we get the castigation. All these features we made today, all these profound points we made today. They would not put them into concrete action and get the executive to act.
For nothing.
It would be for nothing. Now, what we need is a contact and. I put all the details. Senator Presali, I want to help it to contact. So happy for the motion. And keep on with the process. No, so as long as we, we have to take oversight. The legislature, not necessarily the fifty seven. This legislature passed the Labor and Ascension Act. That is the function of the law maker to say we passing this law to reserve, reserve certain number of businesses only for Liberians. The legislature does not give up business registration, it is the executive that does it. The legislature have restricted certain number of businesses for Liberians so that they can own their equipment. It is the executive that gave up business certificate to these, to foreigners to do business in these private businesses against the law. Then they have what the legislature have done, what have we for? This legislature has passed the labor law to reserve work jobs for Liberians in the private sector. It is the executive through the labor ministry that gave up weapon it. That's the legislature.
No.
Not legislature. But it would not follow to ensure the implementation of the law. It come back to us and we are doing nothing. So, I mean, I just wanted to make sure that we are. I wanted to make sure that we are on the same page.
Thank you. Thank you.
Having heard a contact.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Presali. Distinctive senators. Before I make my motion, I want to firstly thank Chairman and Senator Nimla. And members of the team for this wonderful work and your persistence to ensuring that the center debate, the report that was well written, I think is something that we might commend you for. Having said that, and taking you from the presiding, I want to join all of you to say a very big thank you on this debate. And noticing that the amendment to the NASCAR eye and then the loopholes in the decent work bill that passed to other concession leaders have been taken advantage of. I move if I can obtain a second that the report made and debated be considered and all the recommendation made therein be endorsed and the committee work with the committee on judiciary to track a bill that will address the loopholes in the NASCAR eye and the decent work bill that concession leaders are taking advantage of so that the loopholes can be patched in terms of a bill because that's the essence of making public policies and laws. When you make laws and those laws have holes in it that people are taking advantage of and that lead to the suffering of your people, then you come by and address it. Other than that, the law will not be perfect. So I want to move that the recommendation be endorsed and that the committee still be put to work to ensure that they look at the amendment to the NASCAR eye and the loopholes in the decent work bill to produce another bill that will address those loopholes as an amendment to those different acts so that the people living fast in other concession area can have protection, honor, a comprehensive amendment to those laws. If I can obtain a second. You want to reset?
Some.
You want to reset my motion? I can summarize it.
Somebody from Bomey that yet tested me for, I hear three mistakes.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Presali. Okay, so I want to move if I can obtain a second that the recommendation from the committee on labor and judiciary in the report that was just to be debated be endorsed, be endorsed that the committee on labor and judiciary further work to do an amendment to the NASCAR eye and the decent work bills to address those loopholes that passed to other concession leaders have been taking advantage of. If I can obtain a second.
Without restating the motion, which is in two parts.
Yeah.
One is to endorse the committee's report. And the second is to further empower or authorize the committee
Yeah.
to do some harmony or to signal that existing laws regarding retirement to bring it up to speed, to current reality. Without restating the motion, are you ready to vote?
Ready.
Already. Already.
Mr. Chairman, Senator Nimla.
I will be ready to vote if this, uh, your recommendation to modify the law be held by judiciary.
So, sir. So accept, sorry, so accept. That's a wonderful one, so accept.
Senator, you have one.
I will be ready to vote if the movement can accept clearly because that they looked at the existing pension law and amend, not to amend the NASCAR law and the decent work law. No, to look at the NASCAR law and amend the decent work eye to include a specific portion of pension.
Yeah, that's, that will include the amendment. Yeah, that will, it will be inclusive of the amendment.
Chairman, I call your attention. Senator, you are.
If a waste of. Addressing Presali.
Stay on my very left.
I agree with all. Here's the movement can allow or review on the firestone concession which will have a conclusion that will be troubling for this interpretation. So the concession will be look at anyhow.
Stay on my very left.
I will be ready to vote if you can. The firestone concession trial in the opening, the amendment.
Executive function.
Question, sir. I am not really reject that one. You know, I'm a nephew. Yeah, yeah, I'm a nephew, yeah.
Are they have all of the remaining justices?
Maybe you get it, you get it.
So, uh, I will be ready to vote if, uh, the matter you which are secure, uh, pension to that. So security and pension to the company.
Yes, so accept.
You mean ask a committee?
Yes.
To review? Yes, so accept. It will review on the two acts.
Yeah.
Okay, well, all of the others is clear, I will ready to vote.
Yeah.
All those in favor say yes.
Yeah.
Against, abstain, motion carried. Senator, please take note by calling them.
Oh, you have my station. So move.
Okay. Another, uh, any other point?
There will be. The issues of salary payment. Proper basis and the term. Then we can grant you a call.
Residing distributor police. This is what? Colleagues.
Look this one. Yes, your colleagues.
Can you get my? Go ahead you.
This morning, brought by tension for the past days and months since the new minister of finance took over our land ministry all of police. So what's the problem? That they're failing of the present, the last month. Normally, the fifteen twenty for the foreign dollar tier, the raw business they use the pay service, they want to. So I just speak, you have to pay. Police.
We shall not talk about musical locality on top.
Those things are you are having since you know that.
So, Presali police. I want for us to set for the final mission. Many come on Tuesday, they are speaking to you. And I approve it, I just want. I believe today be the first. I believe they serve them and I get their paper. And today for the market. So I'm asking you, Mr. Presali and the distributor police that that the the minister, the minister of finance should come on Tuesday. So please tell us how far labor is going to come. Because you have the year, people you grant their titles and they are saying teachers but I feel he may from one month to another. When you shall have in the past, it should be repeated in the future. Presali, quiet. One month ago, you tell you to be quiet. Since so.
In law, you are quiet.
Okay.
Yeah, there, I know.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Uh, we should have had the ministers of education, health and finance on Thursday and day after tomorrow. We knew that weapons did not concern that to the after tomorrow will be holiday. Tell you the business. So there will be no such a contest which is the national. So I you responding to your concern, which is genuine, Senator Penel. Uh, we will seek the endorsement of this planary to reschedule uh, that hearing which had to do with, uh, the the complaint from, um, Senator Amar Kona regarding the health and education sector. And for which we thought to bring the minister of finance. So I'm seeing, we're seeing planary endorsement for
Next Tuesday.
For next Tuesday to authorize the secretary. And since the finance minister will leave coming, we can just do everything we want. LRE should be before the meeting. Okay, for that be clear on one thing first. Senator Penel has raised an issue of concern. Uh, sometimes we will have these kind of discussions uh, that affects our people out there. Uh, they look to us to see whether we have things about it and this is a very serious matter. We need to know what happened to the economy, why our people are not taking pay in on time. The minister of finance needs to.
Explain to us.
Be brought here. And so, uh, Senator Penel has raised an issue, what's the view of the?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, uh, I will hear, will hear from Senator Snow and then Senator Moy.
Thank you, Mr. Presali. Um, let me tell Senator Penel, uh, uh, raising such an issue that I find the lack of our people. And I think your suggestion is good. I would just suggest that if this is a challenge to come and limit on the performance of the budget revenue. So that's why I just suggesting that instead of it coming and shifting it, let it in the revenue matham so that we know the revenue is not performing. We know what is happening, it is performing. They will know why our people have had to pay on that, it's becoming a project. Last month I was seeing, now apparently the month having forty days now instead of thirty days. That's okay, know what's happening. But there are people who are pressing that we add the LRE commission generous to their parents, all the reason.
Yeah, Senator Mooney. Yeah, thank you. And I want to join, uh, my distinguished colleague from Braggy and the honorable Senator from Bomey. You say, you say yes? You know, when information is not disseminated the right way, then you have people to think and believe the way they think. So it is true when the beginning of salary payment, our employer from the ministry and I was told that they are migrating from a system to a new system that they don't have money. But I don't know why they cannot articulate this to the public. So it will be important that Tuesday, Tuesday, the minister of finance, the LRE and CSA impossible if I can also as CSA so that all of them come. If it is the migration from one pay system or the better pay system to another, that all of them agree, if it is the shortage of cash that been raised by the revenue authority, then we can be asking for another time for revenue to come. So the three heads of institutions that are connected to the payroll, all of them can come here and inform the Liberian people through their senators why the salary of seven or seven are delayed. I think that would be the best thing. Thank you, Senator Mooney. Senator, I'll go now.
Thank you, Presali. I just wanted to call this value attention to the significant issue we have before planary on that day. That has to do with the health sector and the education sector. And moreover, they are huge sectors. So adding CSA. I think it's good that finance can maybe LRE but to add CSA. I want to go to my colleague that maybe we can defer that so that we can have time with those two people administrating by three. While we are having the education and health hearing, yes, the salary issue can copy because it also rules on the two sectors. Thank you.
Senator, uh, what I have to?
Yes, I would suggest that is the private LRE and this office for consultation, probably good in process. You can do.
You, uh, you may ask on next Tuesday.
Yeah.
In briefing and consultation.
Before hearing.
Before hearing. What they have view of the law? The hearing with the ministers of health and education. Were to see about health waters and the sector and volunteer teachers. And then the education sector. The minister of finance was somewhat to come along with them, so that just in case they talk more. No money issue, the minister will be right there, and also that we can have one hearing. What would be concerned raised by Senators Opena, they they now wise the entire thing. So, um. What's the will of the body that would flow with the suggestion from Senator Abonche? But before the Senator Tala?
Mr. Presiding, colleagues. I don't see any confusion.
Well, is that how you can hear, Senator?
I don't see any confusion. In the minister coming to get whatever people. If I'm not discussing that. Education issue. You now come to the issue of finance. You like more of on the Sunday. You are like a people, the airport who raises the issue.
And also C S A have to do.
Very well. So I don't think I'll see any interference. They come related to help education, they will do the finance.
Okay, so can we? Can we any better a motion so that it can be a decision of the plan area? Can we any better a motion so that it can be a decision of the plan area? Senator Tala?
Sir President, uh, colleagues, if. I'm willing to adopt in a second. That. They, I on Tuesday, on next week. That the ministers of finance and C S A. Be invited. Come along and be start having education. So that it's a separate. Uh, hearing without one hearing. Now he comes to live everything.
So. It has been moved and seconded. On Tuesday, we have the ministers of education, health, finance. The C S A boss, and I'm sure he forgot to tell our A. The communication will tell our A to be. Uh, pointed to the effect that we want to know. He's coming to tell us the state of revenue, uh, generation. And the minister of finance is coming to tell us why expenditure is poor. At one time.
Committee of.
Is committee of the whole. Who took it at one o'clock.
Yes.
Are you ready to vote?
Yeah, ready.
On readiness, Senator General Supple, Roger.
Mr. Presiding, the fellow colleagues. I'd like to appeal to the movement.